And welcome to our October fifteenth Public Work Session on the School Improvement Plans. If we could all face the flag and recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Trustee Blake King?
We're here.
Trustee Candelaria?
Present.
Trustee Mamala?
Here.
Trustee Miller?
Present.
Please let the record reflect. We have all five trustees and the Superintendent of Schools. Superintendent Miller?
Good evening, everyone, and good evening those watching online. The purpose of tonight's meeting is for nine of the 12 of our elementary schools to present their school improvement plan. The other three are going to be presenting on the 24th because those principals are at the WEDA Conference this week. So they are out of town and we obviously want you to still hear them, but it's going to have to be next week. As far as format goes, principals, if you brought anybody with you, please take time to introduce them when you come up. The school improvement process is a collaborative process. I'm going to have Ms. Myrick speak on that in a moment. But it's not just the principal writing the plan. It is through a team effort to identify, based on data, what the needs and where we're going to focus our efforts at each of our schools. So they're not going to be the -- the format should be the same from presentation to presentation, but the goals are going to be based upon the needs of the building. And we will need each principal to pull up their present -- have someone pull up their presentation on the display computer. Because of our broadcasting software, it doesn't work for us to preload all of them. So when it's your turn, take a moment and go ahead and pull up what you need to pull up. And I do have a proposal for the board to consider, just because I've been in these before and they can go really long. Would the board consider, and I provide these pads if you would say yes, writing down your questions and then I could provide them to the principals? And I would -- we could even have them answered by the end of this week as opposed to the live questions.
Well, I have mine prepared. All typed out. So I'll just hand them to you.
Okay. That works.
Everyone else okay with that?
And if you would just identify which school you have, because again, like on your notes, if you just put the school and then what your question is, that would be sufficient for me.
Okay.
Sure.
Trustee Miller. I mean, yeah, not trustee Miller, superintendent Miller. So you don't want us to ask any questions. Can we have just one question? And then we present the others to you to present to them?
It's up to the board.
I think in the effort to keep everyone on track and to give everyone time to answer all the questions, rather than, you know, we ask them a question that they're not prepared for. I think it's much easier if we just have them answer them to us by the end of the week. What does everyone think?
Well, last year, the format was different from last year.
It is different. That's why I prefaced it.
No, I understand that. And in past years, people didn't have enough time to present. Those who were coming at the end had less time because there were so many questions. So I think this is a better format.
There's two questions for --
Yeah, I agree.
For whatever.
Okay. Terry, do you want to come up and explain a little bit more about the process?
Good evening, trustee White and remainder of the trustees and superintendent Miller. Thank you for having us here this evening. Before I talk about the school improvement plan process, I just want to share a little something from an experience I had today. A little bit of feedback for you from the mouths of babes. You know, we adopted a new math program in the elementary schools this year. And I was at Hess Elementary today, serving lunch. And so I was walking around to the tables, talking to the students. And I was with a group of 4th grade students. And I said to one table, "What do you like about 4th grade this year?" And it was a group of girls and they said, "We like the new math program." And I said, which kind of stunned me because I was asking other tables and it wasn't about the academics that they liked. Okay? And so I said to them, "What do you like about the new math program?" And they just said that they understand it better and that. So I thought that was kind of, that was positive feedback to share with you, to hear from the kids, what they're thinking about the new program that they have this year.
Nice.
Before she continues, she told me also that one of the kids said, "Mrs. Myrick, are you married to the superintendent?"
Ah! Which made me feel real glad because I'm old enough to be his mother, but we won't go there.
That's great.
So, anyway. Okay. As far as the school improvement plan process, this is the second year in a row that we have used the state process. Two years ago, when we first adopted the state process, it was not mandatory for our schools to use it. But we went ahead and said we wanted consistency among all of our schools. And so we did it. And lo and behold, the state then mandated it this year. So our principals were a step ahead in the way that they were doing their school improvement plans. Also, this year, you know, the schools work together with their plan teams. They're very collaborative in looking at their data, in looking what their needs are at their schools and developing these plans. Well, then, this year, Mr. Miller made a suggestion about having the principals come down and do a presentation. At first, it was going to be Mr. Miller, Ms. Owens, and Ms. Goods and I. And then I suggested to him that we have the whole curriculum team. Because if we could sit and listen and give them feedback, we could also find out how we, as a district-level team, can support each school through what we are doing in central office. So what we did is every school presented their plan to us and we had dialogue. We gave them feedback about the presentation and they made tweaks before they came to you. But then also, we learned more about what they're doing in their school too. And we're able to support them through whether it's grant funding or other things that we're doing down here in central office. So I felt it was really a good school collaborative process and also a support from central office this year. So we just wanted to share that with you. And so then at this point, I know they're anxious to share their plans with you. They each did the process through the state.
Terry, one more thing I wanted you to explain. The community needs assessment. Can you explain what that is?
Okay. Well, the community needs assessment, they actually do an assessment school-wide with their data. They also get feedback through surveys from the community. They get it from teachers. Some may do from students. So there's a -- they get a lot of input into this. It's a collaborative process with their whole community. It is just not people sitting in a room and saying, "This is what we're going to do." And then, of course, looking at all of the data. So they look at all of these needs. And another thing that we are requiring them to do because of the high need that we are seeing through the data with the social-emotional component, every school has a goal based around the social-emotional needs, so. And as we said, they did the school improvement plan based on the state format. But then we also had a format that was more of a streamlined format for them to present for you today. And they're all sticking to that same format in their presentation this evening, too. I wanted to let you know.
Thank you. That'll be helpful.
Okay. All right. We're going to go ahead and let Franklin Elementary start us off.
Good evening, superintendent Miller, president White, and school board of trustees. I'm Regina Grohar, the principal at Franklin Elementary. This evening, I brought just a fraction of our student support team or our leadership team with to help present. I have kindergarten teacher, Tim Scolari, 4th grade teacher, Robin Bellamy, and our school counselor, Jackie McCallas. So they're going to be participating in this evening's presentation as well. So looking at our school demographic data, we are a high Hispanic population. And our EL learners, that population has steadily increased over the last several years. The biggest note is our transient rate. We had 263 students last year at Franklin. 67 total students either moved in or moved out. So that puts our transient rate at about 25 percent. So looking at our I-Step or I-Learn data compared to I-Step, as we know from the state, I-Learn data went down drastically across the state and as did ours. But we dug a little bit deeper to see what our problems were in English Language Arts and Math. And our scores from I-Learn coincided with our NWEA data. And it showed us that about half of our students are struggling in reading, specifically Foundations and Nonfiction, and for math and Number Sense and Computation. So our goal, we'll be getting into the goals here in just a second.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For our math goals, what we want to do is to move 10 percent of our students from that low area. That would be 19 students school-wide. So in order to measure that, we're going to be looking at our NWEA data for the winter testing and also for the spring testing to see if those students move. And also, we'll be doing checkpoints in the classroom with their classwork and their homework. For the Language Arts, we are also going to try to move 10 percent of our students in the Reading Foundations for K-1, 2, and Nonfiction in 3, 4, 5. 10 percent, again, being 19 students, moving them from the low area. And again, measuring that with NWEA and checkpoints in the classroom. Finally, for our social-emotional learning, we discovered by looking at last year's data that over half of our infractions were incurred by the same 12 students. Five of those students have moved on. And so we are left with seven of those students from last year. So as well as doing social-emotional learning with the entire school, we're going to be targeting those seven students and hopefully decrease their infractions by 5 percent for those five students, looking at the discipline data at the end of every quarter, and also a monthly review with the student support team.
Good evening. So what we're trying to do, teachers in the classroom, we're working on reteaching and enrichment, which is something we've been doing for a long time anyway. But basically, that's just what we're focusing on, is incorporating our literacy stations and our math stations again, which allows teachers to do small group work with students, working on reinforcing the skills that we've already taught for the week. We have weekly grade level meetings with our principal, Mrs. Grohar, to discuss how our week went, what's working well, what's not working well, things we can improve on with our students. We pushing the integration practice of math facts. That's something we've been working on. It's still a problem about grades, I'm sure, school-wide, district-wide. So those math facts are very important. We'll keep reviewing on those. Working on silent reading, sustained silent reading, with conferring, also known as independent reading. And then having our -- we set school-wide goals for our students, math and reading. Basically, the way we do is we have our students' goals based on their each individual need. And that they meet a certain goal by, or they meet the goal by the end of the grade and period, then they get teachers offered different classroom incentives. And sometimes we do offer school-wide incentives, too.
Good evening. In regards to the social and emotional aspect of implementing in the schools, we are beginning, well, we have already begun to implement the IDOE's SEL competencies. We are providing additional support for those seven students that we referred to earlier as far as the disciplinary referrals. We have implemented adult mentors within the school. So every morning, the adult mentors check in with those seven children in particular. We do individual and group counseling, and we also provide other frequent check-ins for anybody who may need it. The teachers are implementing morning meetings, which includes mindfulness and the different core competencies from the SEL. We also have monthly classroom lessons with the counselor focusing on the social and emotional competencies. And the monthly support, student support team meetings that was referenced earlier, we review the discipline data and develop solutions for one-on-one basis as well as for the whole school. And then we also started something called Positive Office Referrals. So the teachers refer a student for any of the positive actions. So it doesn't have to be, you know, the student who's always doing really, really well. We want to recognize all of the little things and the little advances. So the principal announces the names on the announcements and gives a certificate and provides a positive call home for the students to the parents or to a guardian of their choice. In the first 43 days of school, we've already made 77 positive phone calls home.
How many were there?
I'm sorry?
How many?
We made 77 positive phone calls home in the first 43 days.
So my next steps in both the academics and SEL is for me to make sure that I'm monitoring all of this. We work very well as a team. The team came up with this entire plan. It wasn't me saying, "Well, I'm going to do this, this, and this." These are a lot of suggestions from the teachers and what they wanted to see from me as well. So we will continue to work on providing quality professional development so that they can further enhance their craft. But we'll be specifically looking at student work. So we can look at those deficiencies and see what they're doing in the classroom, not just NWEA, but what they're doing on a bi-weekly basis. When I meet with the teachers every week, just like Mr. Scolari alluded to, I meet with them to see how things are going in both those subject areas. We specifically talk about the goals first, and then if there's any disciplinary concerns or other concerns, I can help with them. I do that as well. We frequently look at data, including NWEA. And we also recognize students school-wide for their academic achievement. So they do set reading and math goals, and as they achieve their goals, they're announced. They're on our announcements. Our announcements are live on our Franklin Facebook page. So you can check those out whenever. For the social-emotional learning, I work very closely with Jackie, who's our new school counselor, on implementing those SEL competencies and teaching the teachers what they need to do for those as well. We're, I'm monitoring the support for those seven students, kind of seeing if the mentoring thing's going well, how we can tweak it and make it better. I continue, I do walkthroughs every morning through classrooms to see how their morning meetings are going, if there's any students that need anything that I can help support with. Our student support team meets monthly, and we mostly review discipline data, attendance data, and develop solutions. But if there's any other school needs that arise, we look at those as well. And again, we do our Positive Office Referrals. So I'm the one, the teachers refer the students to me. Every student that is referred gets recognized, if it's two, if it's 10, each week. It doesn't matter. We do it weekly. I announce them on the announcements. We take a group picture that is posted to social media. And myself and the student makes a positive phone call home to the guardian of their choice. So that's Franklin's plan and how we're going to achieve it and start bridging that gap.
Thank you very much, Regina.
I also want to add that you saw through this presentation that really, with a comprehensive needs assessment, they really look at their data and they look at what the root cause of that problem is. And then they put those interventions in that address those root causes. And you're going to see that throughout, not only do they do it with their plan, but they monitor it throughout the school year and will continue to look at what those root causes are and address those causes for the deficiencies. Okay, we're going to call up Lincoln Elementary School next.
Good evening, president White, school board members.
Good evening.
Superintendent Miller, and all of my fellow colleagues in the audience. I have with me today my right hand, my everything, Ms. Wilma Vasquez. I could not do this without her. She is amazing.
Can you move the microphone? There you go.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So our leadership team consists of one teacher from each grade level and one rep from every department except for food service, because they can never attend our morning meetings because they're in the cafeteria. But we have a rep from every single department. Our ethnicity, we have a population of 67.7 percent Hispanic. 72.3 percent of our students qualify for free meals. And then 11.4 percent of our students receive services in special ed or have an IEP. 28.4 percent of those students, of our students at Lincoln, are English language learners. With, thank you, with 63 new students last year, we had 58 withdrawals. So our transience, our transientsy rate before calculating preschool students was 22 percent. And then if you include preschool, that was 21 percent. In spite of the drastic decline in our state assessment scores, Lincoln actually had one significant area of growth. If you would notice, our 4th grade math scores increased by 6 percent last year. It went from 35.8 percent to 41 percent in 2019. Our NWEA data supports all of the areas that we have identified as being concerns. We are focusing on, our students demonstrate a lack of mastery in the areas of vocabulary, reading foundations, and math computation. Our entire building, we need to focus on vocabulary and we know that. Our reading foundations, we're starting programs to help with those as well. And then our primary students struggle more in the areas of measurement and data, where our intermediate students need additional support in algebraic thinking and number sense. We have three SMART goals. Actually, I have four, but I'll say we have three SMART goals. We're focusing on vocabulary. We're going to continue to provide lessons in Greek and Latin roots. We're going to provide vocabulary-rich environments. We're going to continue to utilize full inclusion with our LDP and Special Ed and Title I services. We're going to start a new program next week for remediation for our first graders because they are struggling in letter sounds and even identifying some of their letters. In math, we're going to continue to focus on math vocabulary and computation and number sense activities. And then for our SEL goal, last year, we realized that there were 21 students who were tardy 20 or more times. So in an attempt to address those issues, we have created a goal. We're focusing on their tardies. And so we're going, our goal is to decrease those tardies by 10 percent with those 20 students. We're going to, our teachers have started having the morning meetings. They greet the students at the door in the morning. And when they walk in, we try to praise them for being at school instead of attacking them for being late because we know it's typically not their fault. We, we're monitoring the morning meetings and then Ms. Vasquez and I are also communicating with parents when there's an issue with tardies. And then for our teacher next steps, I want to say that, that last year's I-Learn scores, those were, you know, those scores were not the result of our teachers' work because our teachers work hard. So to say we're changing a lot, we're not changing a lot because that would admit that they were doing something wrong and they really were not. We have some phenomenal teachers. So what we're going to continue to do, we're going to continue to implement our 1800 Second Program for our kindergarten students. We're going to continue to conduct conferences during, or with students during the independent reading time. We're going to, well, this is new for the entire school. We started having family time messages in both English and Spanish. So every Monday through Thursday, our parents receive a phone call. In that phone call, every grade level tells parents what they're working on for the week. And the families have agreed, and we haven't had one complaint, the families have agreed to also join us in working on those same skills at home every night from 7:00 until 7:30. So at 6:55, they receive a phone call that says, "It's family time." And every staff member has signed up to record the phone call. So each week, the call is from a different staff member. This week, it was from our head custodian. Next week, it'll be from one of our 5th grade teachers. We also are continuing our vocabulary instruction. We ability group in 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, and then we departmentalize in 4th and 5th grade. We, we have a full inclusion program. We utilize the MTSS model. And we have a strong LDP team in our building. And then for my, for our next steps, the principal next steps, we're going to continue to focus on our safety and bullying presentations. Thanks to Ms. Vasquez, because she facilitates our bullying presentations every year. She introduces the presentations every single year at the beginning of the year and then when we come back from Christmas break to all of our classrooms. We're also going to continue to make sure we conduct walkthroughs, collaborate with our teachers. Of course, our teacher observations and evaluations, and we will provide positive and effective feedback to our teachers, our professional development, our family time calls. We make sure we implement data-driven instruction by conducting data digs with our teams. We provide a positive uplifting and supportive culture. We believe in family engagement. As a matter of fact, that's why we don't have a lot of our team with us tonight because we're having a big event at our school. So look for those pictures on Facebook. And we believe in fluid grouping of students. And that is our plan at Lincoln.
Thank you. Thank you.
(Applause).
I'd like to call upon Jefferson Elementary School.
Hey, Yolanda, you want to, while they're doing that, you want to promote how successful your PTA's been this year?
So currently, well, we might have more right now because we told the students that if they come tonight, they can still sign up for PTA. It's not too late. But as of last week, we already were at 400 members in our PTSA.
Woo!
Yes. Our PTSA, thank you. Our PTSA, they are amazing. We have some very dedicated women in our, well, actually, we have men this year, too. So we have a great group and they are really dedicated to our school. And every single month, we do one huge family engagement activity and that's where they all are tonight. So it's amazing. We have a great group.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Miller, president White, trustees, all my friends. I want to introduce Dr. Jones, who is our assistant to the principal at Jefferson, and my new right arm. She is everything and a lot more. So thank you for letting us have her at Jefferson. Our plan, and Mia has helped us put this together with our plan team. As you can see, that we are pretty evenly divided or evenly dispersed in ethnicity. It's about a third, a third, a third. One of the things that really kind of stands out at Jefferson is that we are a school that has --
Excuse me, can you?
Full inclusion.
Thank you.
And we are at 22 percent for students with IEPs. We are totally full inclusion. We serve students with autism, students with hearing impairments. So we have a number of interpreters in the building. We have students with specific learning disabilities and students with visual impairments. So we are quite diverse and all of the students are included and function really well in the classroom. But that makes us, makes us very special.
Dr. Isman, for anyone who's not maybe versed in education, speak. Can you explain what being fully included means?
That means that the students are in the general ed classrooms with their general ed peers all day long. They have some support sometimes with our interpreters. So if they are a student with a hearing impairment, there would be an adult there that can sign for them, be their voice. But they're fully included into our classrooms all day long. And that's, that's really amazing to see and see them grow as people. Our transient rate was at 39 percent. I really like the way my colleagues broke that down. So I will, in some of my questions, be submitting that to you and how that looks and how that flushes out for Jefferson. Like my colleagues, we took, you know, kind of a hit with I-Learn this year. It was kind of a surprise to us. It was a different type of format. And so in looking at what we need to work on, our area of focus being in number sense and computation, like some of my colleagues, computation seems to be a running theme, number sense, which I heard again, and some algebraic thinking. And in our areas of focus with English Language Arts, the writing. And one of the things that we found to be a little bit different with I-Learn is the students had to respond by typing their answers in. And some of the time, when they had to have an extended response answer, they would answer in just a few sentences. So that's something that I think that we really could beef up and do a little bit more in having the format look similar for their next time around with I-Learn. We took a lead at our NWEA because that's our best predictor of how our students are going to be doing on I-Step. And so in looking at that projections, it seemed to flesh out pretty evenly with 3rd grade and 4th and 5th a little bit. So you can see that our total projected was around 36 percent for 3rd grade. We were actually at, or 36.4, we're just at 36. For 4th grade, it was projected we'd do around 46 percent, but we only did 38. And then at 5th grade, it was projected we'd be at about 57 percent. And so we were a little bit lower than that in the projection. So that made us think, what's different about I-Learn than what NWEA is telling us? And how can we kind of bridge those gaps? The big significant difference came when we looked at our English Language Arts numbers. Because when we looked at our predictors, if we're going to use NWEA as how we're going to set the course for children, how is that different? And it varied quite a bit. And so that led us to the discussion with our staff, what was different? And we talked about paired text being a little bit different in the I-Learn and having a little more higher-order thinking take place in the classrooms. And then again, being able to type out those longer answers. So when we sat down and we met with our teams, we tried to decide which of the students that we're really going to identify by name at each grade level to really focus on for this next NWEA in, in the winter. And so we sat down and looked at all of our students and we were vacillating between, do we take our average students? Because it seemed that I-Learn, you need to be in the 60th percentile on NWEA to pass. Where before, with I-Step, you could be around the 50th percentile. So that kind of got pushed up a bit. So we sat down with each grade level team and determined which specific students we were going to target for interventions for taking a look for our winter score. were going to target for interventions for taking a look for our winter scores for NWEA. So our SMART goals turned out to be that we're going to identify, or we've identified our 19 students that, for math in third, fourth, and fifth, we'll be providing them a little bit more with their ExactPath. Each student has a Chromebook, one-to-one, so that can be implemented in the classrooms and they can do that, those types of things at home. With English Language Arts, we're going to focus on vocabulary and nonfiction and also looking again at that paired text where they have to read two different pieces of literature and then talk about how each one compares and contrasts. And then again, with our social emotional decreasing, our disciplinary infractions, similar to what Regina had said, we have certain students that we see more often than others, so we'll work with those a little bit more. Our teacher next steps, I think I kind of said it as I was going along, outlining and taking a look at that I-Learn assessment and kind of pulling that apart, making sure that we mirror what the state's asking us to do in the classroom along with what's So teachers are going to develop lessons with a new vocabulary, answer comprehension questions, and then answer to a prompt on the computer on a weekly basis so that we get a benchmark and take, you know, assess where they're at. For SEL, our teachers are taking part in two book studies, mindfulness in the classroom and engage the brain. Classrooms are already conducting our morning meetings and teachers are learning about the five core components of that social emotional learning. We've just done our first professional development on self-awareness and teachers being self-aware and just, because if you can model it yourself, you can teach it. And then my next steps are to, our next steps, it's nice to say "our," is to monitor these activities as they go along, assist the teachers, prepare the professional development, monitor that use of ExactPath on NWEA and especially those students that we identified as being kind of on that cusp of passing I-Learn and leading those book discussions. Mia, do you want to-
The one thing that I wanted to add-
Can you get up to the microphone, please?
The one thing I wanted to add was about positive incentive notes. We also have positive incentive notes that we send home or call home about each week for students. And it goes along with three things. We have a goose award for teachers. If they turn in all of their ROR tickets at the end of the year, I mean, at the end of the week and let us know who their star student is for the end of the week and give us a positive incentive note about a student from their classroom, then they get an early dismissal. And I go and I cover their class for half an hour at the end of the day. So each week, a teacher is pulled and their reward is a early dismissal.
Great. Thank you.
And Mia's been awesome in doing that. And it's nice because then she and I can see what's kind of happening in the classrooms, too. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kenwood Elementary School. Some light reading for you all.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amy Yost. I am the principal at Kenwood Elementary. This is my fourth year as the principal there. Okay, so a look at Kenwood. Kenwood has a 95% attendance rate. So we were right at the cusp there. We made the cutoff where it wouldn't affect our accountability grade if we were to receive that. We were at 32% mobility rate. That's one of the highest mobility rates in the district. So that's key for us. That's why it's so important at Kenwood to build that family atmosphere. It's important for us to be welcoming to families. I am a true believer that the moment a student enters Kenwood, no matter what their deficit is, that data belongs to us. Those kids belong to us. That's important for us to believe that. We are 16% chronically absent at this point, which is another huge factor for our students. 80% of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch. 12% of our students are English language learners. 16% of our learners are identified as gifted and talented, which is incredible. 9% of our students receive special education services. We have had an 83% drop in office referrals over the past four years. That's incredible. That's key. And that's due to my incredible staff. It's due to my incredible teachers. We've truly increased the amount of Tier One supports we have in place for those students. We know that in order for students to learn and to grow, they have to be in the classroom to do that. So that's key. And then, just a small thing, 100% of our students are capable and willing to learn. And that's incredible. So, the data, like my counterparts, we have had a huge drop in the passing percentage from I-Step to I-Learn with the exception of third grade. But historically, third grade math has been one of our weakest areas. We put a lot of supports and interventions in place last year and we moved to 50% of our students passing I-Learn in that area. So we're going to continue with a lot of those interventions. That was the highest passing percent in math in the district. So we're really proud of that piece. Also, historically, fifth grade ELA has been one of our weakest areas. And we've seen that pretty consistently at Kenwood. We departmentalize in fifth grade to help with that transition to sixth grade. So we saw a lot of success in math over the years, but we've struggled in fifth grade ELA over the years. NWEA data gives us a lot of trends as well. You'll notice consistently, we see that our students moving from fourth to fifth grade take a drop in their growth expectation, meeting that growth expectation. So that's something that we wanted to address. We also noted that our growth percentile in kindergarten, first, and second grade was significantly higher than our growth percentile in third grade. So those were key issues that we wanted to address with the school improvement plan. Our SMART goals for this year, by the spring of 2020, Kenwood will increase the amount of students meeting their growth expectation in fifth grade ELA by 10% as measured by NWEA. And we use NWEA for quite a bit because we're able to do that multiple times throughout the year. So they take that assessment three times. So it's a good way to progress monitor our students as opposed to one time throughout the year. Our second SMART goal was to reduce the amount of office referrals for the identified 11 students by 18% during the 2019-20 school year. So like I said, we had a huge decrease in office referrals overall. I was not doing enough for my Tier Two, Tier Three students, though. They were chronic office referrals and we really needed to, needed to put a plan in place to support those learners. So we're addressing that this year. And our smart, our third SMART goal, by the spring of 2020, 65% of third grade students will meet or exceed their projected writ in math as measured by NWEA math assessment. So how we're going to do that? The first thing is, we did targeted two-week cycles of remediation in third grade math provided by my fifth grade math teacher. So what that is going to look like, third grade has consistently been an area of weakness for us with the exception of last year. And we, we started to do some of this last year and saw a huge payoff with that. So we have a really strong fifth grade math teacher, so we're utilizing her for remediation in third grade. So my third grade teachers actually gave, are giving an assessment to our third grade students to find their areas of weakness. Now, after they identify those, we're going to do two-week cycles of remediation based on the student needs. So they'll be pulled in for two-week windows and we'll hit those deficits with them. The third grade team will align Envision with School City of Hammond's scope and sequence and identify areas of weakness according to the identified critical and important standards. We're doing third grade math word walls this year. Our student support team is going to complete a book study of Jodie Carrington's Kids These Days, which is an amazing book that talks about that regulation piece that's so important for our students. Three staff members will attend a restorative practices workshop in September. I had the opportunity to attend that. It was absolutely, it was incredible. And my teachers came back and started implementing some of those practices immediately. We're going to give that out to staff in a way where those teachers are going to start to provide some professional development to my staff members so we can use some of the things we learned and get those toolboxes out to our teachers as well so they can implement some. But like, a quick win for us was my teacher set up a meeting with parents after their work hours, like something as simple as that. We did it at 6:00 at night. She stayed, I stayed, and she met with parents to go over kind of her format for the classroom, what that looks like, what her expectations are. She had grandparents come in, multiple family members come in, and it was a chance for the child to see, we are on the same team. Like, we're all, we're all in favor of you. We want you to be successful. That was a huge message for our students to see that relationship between the teacher and their grandparents, the teacher and their parents. It was nice for the students to see them on the same side, on the same team. Targeted interventions for Tier Three students will be provided. Our local churches have been such a key component for the success at Kenwood. So we have a program called Kids Hope and they do mentors for our staff, or for our students, I'm sorry. And that's been incredible for us. This year, my 11 identified students all have an additional mentor. So every member of my leadership team adopted a student and they check in with them three times a week. They progress monitor how they're doing. Sometimes they'll have lunch with them. But we're looking for key things that are triggers for our students. Like, if we notice consistently, at the end of the day, one of our students is always having a behavior issue. As a student support team, then we're coming together, trying to figure out what the reason for that is. And one of the reasons we found out is some of our kids go to after-school care and that was a trigger for them. Right before the end of the school day, that was a huge issue with why their behavior was starting to pick up because they didn't want to go. So looking at things like that and really coming together as a team to identify the needs of our students was huge. We also did a student survey and asked those 11 students if they could identify a member of the staff that they felt like loved and cared about them. Every single student could identify multiple members of my staff that they feel like truly love them and care about them. And that was key for me. And they also talked about like, things that they want their teacher to know. One of them wanted their teacher to know the daycare piece, that they don't like going to daycare. A couple of them wanted to know that they're an only child and that when they get in trouble at home, it's all on them, right? So that's, those are powerful things for us to be aware of. Students will receive minimum of 30 minutes weekly on ExactPath to work on their individual skills deficits. And then principal next steps, which I think are, it's really, really important. I'll say this, at Kenwood, I'm, I'm really fortunate to be there. The success we've had at Kenwood is due to my teachers and my students and my parents. When you see negative data, I say that falls on me, right? Because I have all of the, I have, I have everything to make that school successful, truly. There, it's an incredible staff, incredible students and parents. So the things that I need to do for our next steps is, we're creating a PSYOP team as an additional support to our teachers who were PSYOP trained last year. We're doing model lessons and feedback to these teachers through the LDP department and Lauren Milton, who came in last week and provided a lot of support to our teachers. She did walkthroughs, feedback. We did a debrief session with all of my teachers. And the best part about that is every teacher was there, right? Like, I didn't have a single teacher call in for work that day and say, "No, I don't want to take part in this, I'm sick." Nothing. Everybody welcomed that feedback and wanted to grow and learn. That's key. Additional weekly walkthrough and specific feedback in our fifth grade ELA classroom geared towards independent reading and guided reading. Providing differentiated PD for staff, so I'm giving them options this year. Would you rather go to Envision professional development or independent reading professional development? And both are offered on the same day, so they have a choice. They can, they can attend which one is more meaningful to them. Leadership Academy for the identified 11 students with the highest amount of office referrals during the 2018-19 school year. So prior to the start of the school year, we welcomed these students back two weeks early and did a jumpstart program with them. And we did some leadership team building skills with them. Our parents were really on board for it. They came up with our school theme this year, which is "we" before "me." It was a really powerful academy for our students. We've continued that, so they're going to do weekly meetings with those students to continue that team building. One of the things I noticed about these 11 students, their leadership potential is incredible. Like, they have natural leadership in them. We just have to gear it towards positive. We hired a full-time counselor through the Lilly Grant, who's been incredible for us. Tabitha Kelly has been absolutely amazing in meeting with students and parents. And then I'm working with the student support team to create a school-wide plan to address Tier Two and Tier Three behaviors in our school. We've added an additional meeting every month for this team to meet because, once again, my teachers were completely on board with that and were willing to do an extra monthly meeting. So we have a lot of plan to get through this year, but we have a lot of supports in place and I have the team to do it. So we're going to make it happen.
S-I-O-P, what is that?
PSYOP.
Yeah, I don't know.
That was one of my questions. I wrote it down.
Okay, well-
No, no, what was it? What's PSYOP?
What is, yeah, go ahead.
The PSYOP is additional supports for our English language learners.
Okay.
Yeah. It's training that we've, that we put our teachers through.
Are they ready? And referral, they keep talking about referral. What is that?
For-
Discipline referrals.
For, I'm not sure what context it was in.
The term kept coming up, referral?
Office referral.
Office referral.
Oh, office, that's, that's when a student is referred by a teacher to the office for their behavior typically.
Okay.
Those have been cut down significantly.
I'm just not familiar with all these terms. I just sit on this board.
No problem. No problem. Happy to help.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Our next presentation is going to be by Edison Elementary School.
Oh, I didn't take one. Okay.
All right, here we go. Now for something completely different, following that awesome presentation. Madam President, Mr. Miller, Superintendent, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. I'm very excited for my first presentation on behalf of Edison Elementary-
Closer to the mic.
There you go.
Better?
Yep.
Okay. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Edison and I'm grateful for your support. Thank you very much. So, starting out with our demographics, you can see we are about 31% of our students are black, about 48% are Hispanic. About 77% of our students qualify for free or reduced lunch. Little over 15% of our students are in special education and about 16% of our students are English language learners. Our transcency rate for the last school year was just over 21%. So this slide compares our I-Learn and our I-Step data to that of the state of Indiana. So the state is represented in blue, light blue for the 2018 I-Step and dark blue for the 2019 I-Learn. So you can see the impact of the change in the test for each grade at the state level. In yellow, you see Edison's results for the 2018 I-Step as compared to the 2019 I-Learn results in green. So a few things that are noteworthy, drawing your attention first, the third grade in ELA, you'll see that we dropped 27% while the state dropped 21%. In fourth grade, while the state dropped 18%, our fourth graders only dropped 8%. So that's gap closing growth. In fifth grade, while the state dropped 13%, we only saw a 4% decline. Looking at math, again, we see had, we had a more significant decline than the state as we dropped 23% in third grade and the state dropped only 0.5%. In fourth grade, while the state saw, saw almost a 7% drop, we were happy to see- In fourth grade, while the state saw almost a 7% drop, we were happy to see that our fourth graders actually went up 9%. However, in fifth grade, our decline actually was 3% greater than the state. So we realized that comparing grade levels year to year, as well as comparing two different tests, is apples to oranges. But we also realize that's how the state chooses to look at us, so we have to be mindful of that data. However, we're more focused on data that we can actually use, and we wanted to compare those results, look for patterns, and then identify our areas of focus. So this slide is showing our NWA assessment data from spring of 2018-19, the same time period that the iLearn assessment was taken. Our growth data is in light blue, and this represents the percentage of our students who met their growth expectations. So the national norm, according to NWA, for students to meet their growth expectations is 50%. That's what is expected. But as you can see, we're doing a great job of growing our kids. We're above 50% with every subgroup. It's when you look at proficiency in dark blue, meaning the percentage of students who are above the grade level norm, that we start to see some disparities, especially with our boys in ELA in math, and with our black students in math. Digging deeper, and in the interest of time, it's not represented here, keeping to the format, we found this was particularly true in third through fifth grade, and we believe that the lack of reading proficiency is also impacting the students' math abilities. It's not the growth, we're growing our kids. It's that students who are starting below grade level, and they're finishing below grade level, even if they make a year's worth of growth. They have to make more than a year's growth to make up that difference. So our SMART goals, and comparing those results to iLearn, looking for patterns rather than relying on a single assessment, we see that our boys are reaching proficiency at a 10% lower rate than our girls, and our black students are reaching proficiency at a rate of about 20% lower than their Hispanic and white peers. This data is consistent with what we saw on our fall NJOE assessment also. So as we're seeing a pattern across multiple assessments, we've identified our first focus area as our boys in ELA, with our SMART goal focusing particularly on our fifth-grade boys. Our second focus area is proficiency of our black students in mathematics, with our SMART goal focusing on our third through fifth grade black students. Finally, our focus area of social emotional learning, as we're seeing an increase in students who are having difficulty managing their emotions, handling disappointment, and having the ability to express their feelings and work through their emotions. Outbursts, meltdowns, inability to regulate their emotions are part of the school day with increasing frequency. Therefore, we set the SMART goal of having 100% of our teachers utilizing strategies with an emphasis on connections, as determined by the district, and is measured by walkthrough and observation data. So, next steps. Green indicates something that we've already completed. Yellow is in the process of being completed, and no highlight, no highlight at all indicates what's yet to come. I have developed a new format for data analysis and shared that with the whole staff for us to begin using with our beginning-of-the-year NWA data. There is a copy of that in your folders. We did create additional similar forms for our special area teachers, our language development teachers, and our special education teachers. In yellow, we're in the process of, and some of these will just be ongoing throughout the year. We've supplied each classroom with a mini social emotional library, Byron Garrett Social Emotional Library as a resource. And we've also purchased the book, Fostering Resilient Learners: Strategies for Creating a Trauma-Sensitive Classroom. It has arrived and will distribute next Thursday to our teachers for, to our whole staff for a guided book study. We'll need to monitor our data throughout the year for evidence of the impact of these interventions, and revisit, review, and revise as needed. Teacher next steps, participate in collaboration professional development focusing on data analysis by subgroup. We're already rolling with that. Complete assessment data analysis by subgroup, so they're using those new forms. And they've begun analyzing their assessment data using that format. Identifying their quick wins and longer-term goals are also a part of that process. And again, the last three bullets are ongoing. And I didn't know we weren't going to have questions, so I just...
You'll get the questions.
Send them over.
Believe me, you have questions.
And also, we did dig deeper, and we know that our fifth-grade boys particularly are struggling with, in NWA, with nonfiction, and iLearn, it was with writing. Our third-grade black students are struggling with computation. Our fourth-grade black students with algebraic thinking and on iLearn number sense. And our fifth-grade black students also algebraic thinking and computation on iLearn.
Thank you, Lynn.
Our next school is Wallace Elementary School.
Good evening, Mr. Miller, President White and trustees. I am Lori Thursby, Principal Wallace, and I have with me, this is Ms. Melinda Hawkins. We also have in the audience Ms. Keisha Payton, one of our teachers. And at the computer right now is Amy Sweeney, our instructional coach. So I've had the pleasure of working at Wallace since last year of September, about September, and I feel very fortunate to have the opportunity to lead such a diverse and incredible school. Okay? So we're going to start off with some data. Need glasses. I can't see. We did add the student numbers on there. So last year, we finished with a total of 346 students, and as you can see, we are predominantly half and half. We've got about 44% that's Hispanic, or black, and then we've got about 45% that is Hispanic. And our students are predominantly, as you can see, also receiving free and reduced. And then we also have about 72 students, about 21% that are ELO. In our special ed population, we have about 46 students, which is 13%. I tried to add the student numbers in there, because I feel like percentages, unless you sort of know the exact number, it can be challenging. So, we have a very, very diverse school. The transancy rate is 27%, and we found the transancy rate because we had, ironically, 47 new students come in and 47 students withdraw within a school year. I thought that was ironic, and with, ending with 346, so we're at 27% transancy rate. And we know how detrimental that can be for our school with so many ins and outs in a school year. So, that's something that we are looking at. You know, we have the Wallace Way, and we're trying to include all the students this school year, because we do have a number of students that came to us from Lafayette, and a number of students that came to us from Maywood. When they redistrict a little bit of that, when they closed Lafayette, we had some of those students come. And in addition, we have, we lost about seven teachers last year with the RIF, and so we have quite a few new teachers. So, this year, we created a Wallace Way, because it was so new for everyone, we tried to build community in that. Okay? When you're looking at our data, just like everyone else, and the iLearn really hurt us due to the test being so different. However, I do want to note, if you look at the district average compared to our averages, we are higher in our third-grade math. We were at 44%. The district was 41. And then also in our fourth grade, we were at 46%, and the district was at 37. We were very close to the state average on both of those. And then if you look at language arts, again, we were higher than the district average with our fourth grade, we were at 37, and then fifth grade, we were at 35. So we do, we know that we are working and doing well in certain areas. However, that test was so unique and so different, we took a hit with some of that. And we were looking hard at our third grade and our fifth grade because of the numbers that we're at there. If you follow the progression through the iStep data, you can see that we stay somewhat consistent. There's slight drops, but at the same time, the test in and of itself, we feel, was a big reason for the drops that we had. Okay? If you look at our NWA data too, just like what Lynn was explaining, we are meeting our projected growth with our students, however, the... I'm trying to read my notes as I'm also talking to you guys. We are meeting our growth, however, we're not at that 50% for the norm. And that's something that we're looking at. And some of the areas that we realize we have deficits in, again, is the vocabulary, reading foundations, data analysis, computation, and the algebraic thinking. So those are areas that we are also looking at hard with our students. Now, our plan is a little different, because we had the opportunity last year, we received grant money, and we were working with a company called Equitable Education Services. So we are, our plan is a bit more comprehensive in that this company is sort of guiding us and moving us forward with some of the things. So, when you see our SMART goals, we had quite a lot of details and a lot of information. We tried to pare it down very, very understandable, because there was a lot of educational language and a lot of details in there. So when you see the SMART goals, they're very limited. However, when you see the plan and all the information that was provided in there, there's quite a bit that we need to address. So, I'll try to share it with you in a way that's understandable, but I'm telling, the plan itself is quite lengthy. So, if you would like a copy of that plan from Equitable Education Services, we can also provide that with you. Okay? Because it really does give a comprehensive overview of what we have to do. And there was quite a bit of data that they gathered. They worked with us, with our leadership team, they met with individual groups of students, they met with individual teachers. It was a, pretty much a year-long process, and they had developed a really unique plan just for us. But it's a big holistic plan. So it wasn't just diving down into one specific thing, it was looking at us holistically. So when you see the goals, we'll talk a little bit about that. Okay? So basically, the goals are, we are going to work on three things. We want to increase the number of students that are passing the test, that was the first one. The second one was, we want to increase the number of students that are achieving high growth and decrease the number of students that are, that have low growth. And then also, the third part was the SEL component. So, pretty much, that's what we have here summarized. However, with the information he provided, he took each subgroup and told us exactly the percentages. We didn't include that here, we tried to give you an overall percentage. The subgroups that we have to really look at are African-American males and our ELL learners. Those are our subgroups. So, for us, our SMART goals, like I said, it's decrease the proficiency, it's to increase the students receiving high growth, and decrease the number receiving low growth. And then our SEL is to decrease the number of students that are receiving suspensions and our attendance issues. We do have quite a few students that have chronic absenteeism, and that was one of the things that we realize hurts us, not just for missing school, but coming in tardy, because they're missing our success time, which is our RTI time specifically set aside every morning for students, for teachers to work with them from 9:10 to 9:45 specifically at their, at their current level. So, we realize that that has created a big problem for us. Now, with this study that we did with Equitable Education Services and what we realized through this, so if you look at our next steps for teachers, you're going to see that we are starting, like, from the top, working our way down. So we want to identify those priority standards. You know that there's so many standards in Indiana, right? So he said, and we agree through this process, we need to identify those priority standards and the supporting standards. We need to then have curriculum maps, because what we realized, there were, this teacher's sort of doing this, this teacher's doing this, this school's doing this, this school's doing this. So as a district, we also, I know there's conversation on that, but we at Wallace realized we need to have a curriculum map. What is it we're teaching? What specifically should we be teaching? And how are we teaching those things? So we are starting at the top, creating and working with this company to develop those curriculum maps. And then with related to that, we need to find out, or we need to develop the assessments to assess that. So, if you see our teacher steps, this is sort of where we're heading, okay? And then they are participating in PD with how to understand and develop a priority instructional model in order to use literacy across the discipline and to improve, there were like four focus areas for instruction also. So those, that's what we're going to be working on. And then with SEL, we have the competencies from the state that we have to be looking at, what's the Common Language. We also have the morning meetings that we're doing with the students. And then we are working on, we have a couple books that we're already looking at. We ordered Lost at School, which they received last week. So we're doing a book study to look at the effects of poverty on students' mindset, cultural competency, and how teachers can address those students that are in that period of anger, emotional distress, what's the best way to deal with that. So that's one of the things we're doing. And then for Ms. Hawkins and myself, of course, we are part of all the things going on with the teachers and trying to lead them through, looking at what are the priority standards. We're going to be helping and be part of the curriculum map team, trying to develop that. We're going to be looking at and creating units of study so that everyone is implementing these units of study. We're doing walkthroughs to assess those units of study. There's a program that we're going to be learning in order to do the walkthroughs, and then teachers will be trained on that. We'll be providing PD to facilitate the application and what to do with those curriculum maps. And then for SEL, we're doing the, the book study, the Lost at School. We're also doing something, and I forgot to put it on there, but we are having playworks come in. This is an outside company that's going to be coming in to assist us to train the staff on, and this sounds simple, but how to play. So we have so many children that do not know how to play. They don't know how to take turns, they don't know how, what is good sportsmanship, they don't know how to explain how they're feeling during a game, or if the game, in the middle of the game. So this company's coming in, they will help train us, we're going to train the staff, and there'll be ongoing support with that, not just the one time that they come. And then there's an online component that goes along with that. So that's part of this. And then we are working, as I said, with the books. And then Ms. Hawkins and I are also doing good news phone calls. We've tried to, at least one a day, sometimes there's more. We've had teachers also do good news phone calls. We've asked them all to reach out to the families at least once in the beginning of the year, and then to continue with that, because we know that that communication with home and trying to build that community is the most important thing for us. Okay? And that's our plan moving forward. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
As Harding Elementary sets up, I just want to add too, when Ms. Thursby was talking about working with the Equitable Education Solutions and doing a very comprehensive needs assessment, that is all because of Wallace's federal grade. And the federal grading system is really not a punitive system, it really is a system of support. And so what has happened is, they were eligible for some grant money, and that grant money supported them in having this consultant. But what's really great about this consultant is, this consultant has worked with Eggers, it worked with Columbia, and they worked with Wallace, because they were all comprehensive school improvement schools. They are going to work with all of our elementary and middle schools now. We are going to have consistent curriculum mapping across the district with their assistance based upon what we found out through this process. So, I just wanted to share that with you. So, okay, I'm going to turn it over to Harding now.
Good evening, Mr. Miller, School Board. Thank you for the opportunity.
Bring it way up.
You may have to hold the mic.
All right. Can I drop it, see when I'm done? Okay. Happy Boss Day, Mr. Miller, and to Ms. Owens in Rhode Island. Okay. I brought with me my awesome assistant at the principal, Ms. Garrison, and our newly teacher, Mrs. Thomas. They've been a terrific partnership, and I'm looking forward to a lot of great things with them. So we're going to start. So, we're going to start. So, here's a quick look at our enrollment count. Okay? Things to point out are, we have 18.6 students with special needs percentage, 12.9% ELs. Those are very high rates. Our transency rate was 19%. Our enrollment is over 600 this year. So, actually, 633, plus we got new kids within the last two weeks. So, we're still climbing.
Keep them there through February.
Okay. We have 24 full classroom teachers with not including special needs classrooms. So, just to know, we're, we have a lot of kids, and we're doing a lot. This tells us that we have to adjust and differentiate for our kids every single day. 19% transency means one out of five kids enters, leaves throughout the year, which means we don't get to see them for the full year for most part. We're faced with students that don't begin the year or spend as much time with us as we'd like them to. And as our population and needs change, so does our mindset, our thinking, and the way that we teach and our techniques. So, this is kind of like the growth mindset that we're trying to start at Harding and continue. Okay, so our, okay, so this is our quick I-Learn data from last year. You can kind of see the comparison to the, oh, I'm not doing that. Last several years, we had I-Step. Just like most schools, our numbers went down. Couple of things to point out. First is, it's a much more comprehensive test. It's a longer test. It's a more difficult test. Don't want to waste your time and talk about that. But that being said, ELA went down at all three grades. So, you can see the drop in there. Our averages are higher than the district in five out of six of those categories. As difficult as this test was, our mathematics score actually went up. We're at 47%. Not quite as high as one of our awesome colleagues back there, but it's still pretty good at 47%. Same thing with our fourth grade percent. We attribute this to piloting Pearson last year. So, when we had that in our third and fourth grade, we went up in both of those grades. Our fifth grade was not quite as high. We had, still forming our new team. This year, we're confident that we're going to be in the 40s. My personal goal, off the record, is 50% for all three grades. I know that's asking a lot, but I feel like we're capable of that, and so I'm putting that out there. Okay, our MAP data. This is the data that we feel is, and you heard our colleague say this earlier, probably the most important to us because we see it three times a year. More importantly, we see it from K through 5. So, going back to what I talked about with the transency moment ago, if one out of five kids isn't there for part of the year or parts of the year or back and forth throughout the year, it makes this much more difficult. So, the MAP data is what gives us that information at the beginning, middle, and end of the year, in one year, plus the next year, plus the next year. So, if we keep kids in our building, we keep going better and we keep bringing up. A lot of good things to think about with MAP this year at Harding. Just like I-Learn, we have two parts, the RIT score, which is the achievement and the growth portion. Our math RIT scores are above the national norm. The ELA scores are the same. We have several categories up there that were among the highest in the school city for the elementary schools, so we're very, very pleased with that. Okay, so this keeps dropping. Our theme this year is building a foundation. We heard one of our colleagues talk about Tier One stuff. Tier One is what every classroom in the building should be doing. So, we're really focusing on that. Went to see George Batsky last year from Florida, and he was fantastic. He focused mostly on special education, but the concept is putting effort into academic, social, behavior, all of those things in every classroom. If you have a strong foundation at Tier One, it makes everything else that follows much, much easier. So, that's our focus this year, building a foundation. And it leads us to our three SMART goals. First one is, oh, thank you. First one is a 5% increase in math and I-Learn. I think that's pretty, I think we can do that. Our second one is a 5% increase in K to 5 for ELA in MAP. And again, we're using the MAP score there because it's measured from all the grades in K through fifth grade. We'd like to see the I-Learn as well, but the focus for our SMART goal is that MAP. And then finally, our third SMART goal is behavior-focused. And our goal is to have 10% less in fractions, which is officer referrals compared to last year. Okay, so we have a lot, okay, we have a lot of stuff up there. I highlighted a few of them that I'm just going to point out because I think that they're pretty significant. First, we want to start with building on what we've done well in the last year. We have a lot of good strategies we're using, beginning with various modalities, which means helping the kids with doing things with technology, hands-on, verbal, written, all of those good things, just good teaching practices. So, we're going to continue to do that. We had reteach and enrich last year. We're going to continue doing that and make that better. Also, we're going to increase and make our PBS focus even better. Our next big push this year is mindfulness and SEL focus. We did something different this year where we had time for morning meetings. We carved out the first 30 minutes of the day from 9:00 to 9:30 to give the teachers a chance to build relationships with kids, have morning meetings, do some Charactered, maybe watch a video, focus, get an important SEL focus so that they can focus on school. Kids that can't focus on school and regulate and cope can't do much academics. And until we teach them to self-regulate and help ourselves to do that as well, we're not going to make much growth. So, that's our, our main focus there. We're also going to incorporate, since you saw the ELA data was kind of in the tank, we need to get there across the building. We're going to have very specific ELA strategies, vocabulary, planning and instruction, and that's a big push for our academics. We're also going to be using Pearson. I feel like we're making great strides there, and since we're incorporating K to 3, K to 2 up to that point, we're going to be even building stronger foundation for mathematics as well. We're going to be using data and our teacher knowledge of students to help create semester plans. I started that last year, and it's something I tweaked this year so that we have a winter, or I'm sorry, a fall plan and a winter plan. And the reason I picked those two is because we want to have a strong foundation for the beginning of the year. Each teacher had to tell how they're going to hit those SEL, how they're going to start the foundations for the year. Halfway through the year, when we take our, our MAP data, we're going to look at that again and see, how are we doing that with academic, with SEL? And how are we going to reteach and enrich our kids to meet all needs? Okay, last one is my steps. I have to be the leader in the school, and I have to help change the focus, the way that our staff and community looks at students' learning and keeping kids in mind. If we're not keeping kids in mind and we're not looking at the way we change our lens and our mindset, then everything I talk about is just wasted paper and space. So, we have to change that mindset and focus, and it starts with me. I want to continue to reflect, and I think the staff has seen me do that in the last 15 months, and I'm going to continue to do that. I will also help others to do the same and have a growth mindset. We use that word a lot because it's very important, and we want our staff and kids to know that too. It brought me great pleasure, and I didn't put this in the notes, but I was in a classroom doing walkthroughs and observations this week, and I heard the teacher say to the kids in one single lesson about six times, no less, why do we make mistakes? It's okay to make mistakes because that's how we learn. We do better when we make mistakes. And helping kids to see that is just going to carry them, not just as students, but as people, and it's going to help us to grow, and that's what I want everybody to get. Sorry. Okay, so I, my job is to support teachers with Pearson math and ELA strategies to build those foundations, both for academic and again for SEL. And finally, I need to create an environment that helps students to create, to problem-solve, to do those higher-order thinking things, and, and prepare them for jobs that we don't know exist yet. Right now, we're looking at our kids and we're thinking, when they come in, we don't know what college and jobs are going to look like 10 years down the road, 15 years down the road. So, we have to get them to be able to think and problem-solve. And if we do that with technology, with some STEM, with some math, and with thinking and explaining, then we can prepare them for anything that comes their way. So, that's our sip.
Thank you.
Ray, do you?
While they're getting ready for the next one.
Yeah, whoever's coming up next, go ahead and get started. But Ray, Trustee Blake King was asking if you could tell the audience about the young lady who plays the guitar during?
During cafeteria.
Yeah, please. It is National Lunch Week, so thank you to Mrs. Blake King for joining us. She was one of our, I think we've had 12 to 15 guest servers in three days. So, we've got another day full of guest servers tomorrow. So, thank you for joining us. But last week, one of our cafeteria workers, actually three weeks ago, said, I have a son that is a musician. Can he come and play music during National Lunch Week? So, we got his background check, and he's been there two, three times this week, and it's been a really wonderful week. People are noticing a difference in our cafeteria worker, sorry, Anna. They've enjoyed it a lot, and they said, can I play music every day? So, we're already talking about going to the libraries, getting some CDs and putting some classical on so that the kids have something to listen to every day. It's just, it's part of that climate, and I'm seeing it change this year very, very boldly, so I'm really happy about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Anna Verduzco, and this is my third year at Irving Elementary School. And I'll go ahead and introduce our team members today. We brought four members of our leadership team. We have Sarah Kylander, she's assistant to the principal. We have Mr. Stephen Labuda, he is a second-grade team leader at Irving. And we have Kyle Stevens, she is the RTI team leader for Irving. And we have Debbie Jones, she is the team leader for our special area departments. She's a music teacher, and she's a team leader for art, music, gym. So, they have been a very important part of our leadership team and our planning for the school improvement plan. In addition, I'd like to say, I'm currently mentoring Stephen Labuda as he takes his administrative courses. And Ki, Sarah Kylander is mentoring Kyle Stevens as she's going through her courses as well. So, this has been a great experience for them. So, we'll go ahead and get started, and we're going to take turns explaining different areas.
Good evening. We'll start with some of the demographics. Irving Elementary School has a very unique makeup. As you can see, 75% of our students are Hispanic. 75% of our students receive free and reduced lunch. About 10% of our students receive Special Education Services. And then the breakdown of English-language learners and non-English-language learners, we have 20, about 27% of our students are English-language learners. But an important note is that 46% of our students are identified as language minority students. An additional note, last year, Irving ended with approximately 488 students. At the start of this year, we are the new Irving, and we have 764 students. We have 28 grade-level teachers, and that doesn't include our LDP-certified teachers, our specials teachers, our mild and moderate special ed teachers as well. So, the new Irving is a very big school.
Yes, it is.
Okay, and so, in our I-Step growth, we had saw a huge drop in our I-Step scores, especially in math for, for fifth grade. As you can see, when those kids were in third grade, they scored at a, 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 um, 41%. And there's, had showed drops all three year, or all two years. As we saw that drop, we had also tried to see what was the gap that those kids weren't at. And so, we saw that there was a weakness in, um, number cents. And it wasn't just in third, fourth, and fifth grade, um, it was K through 5. And so, we spent a big portion of our, um, um, of our, um, PD, um, um, yesterday, trying to, trying to hone in on what it is and what can we do as a school so that we don't see this drop, um, again.
Okay, so then, we wanted to analyze our NWEA data, and I am the data coordinator for the school this year. As others have said, the NWEA data is important because we get to see it and measure growth three times a year. So, for our RIT scores, we went up progressively from fall to winter to spring on NWEA in both math and reading in grades 3 through 5. And then last year, our number-one goal was growth, and NWEA data shows we were more than the norm in every area, and some areas we were even almost double. So, therefore, we are closing the achievement gap with our NWEA.
To mention another area of growth, particularly as it affects our English-language learners, you can see the trend from 2017 to last school year. Our language proficiency levels increased from 3.2% all the way up to 7.9%. So, those are the students that reached all the way to level 5 on the WHEATA testing and/or have graduated out of those services. Just another note, our transency rate decreased from 23% to 20%. And also, we met our attendance goal last year at 95.33%. And so, for now, the last three years, we have met our attendance goal at Irving.
Okay, so here are our SMART goals. When we looked at the data carefully and by subgroup, the data showed that although primarily our, all our fifth graders did struggle in the I-Learn assessment, and they also, and we saw that again in the NWEA assessments, our English-language learners struggled more than our other subgroups. So, we are going to really focus on our English-language learners, but that doesn't mean we're not going to follow through with everything we need to do with other kids as well. But we're, our plan is to get 88% or higher on English Language Arts, not only in achievement, but also growth. And we are going to kind of zoom in and focus on nonfiction tests and the implementation, also the PSYOP model strategies in all our classrooms. Last year, 100% of our teachers were trained in the PSYOP model daily. All our teachers not only posted and their content objectives, but also our language objectives, and we are going to continue to do that this year. Our second one is, our second goal is for the fifth-grade English learners in math, again, achievement and growth. We hope and plan to increase at least by 8%. And when we looked at the data, we disaggregated it for I-Learn, it showed that our greatest need was focusing on number sense. Our students just are lacking skills in number sense. And again, as I mentioned, not only for fifth grade here, but we did our data dig yesterday, it's all our grade levels. So, that is a foundational skill that the students really need to be proficient in so that they can be proficient in the other skills, the next, such as measurement. So, another area of focus will be increasing our overall fourth-grade proficiency level by 10% in writing with specific focus on narrative, organization, and purpose. And where we got the, you know, we were able to zoom in on our focus areas is by looking at the blueprints that I-Learn offers. It literally tells you what standards to focus on and where to zoom in. So, we shared that as well with teachers, so that is a teacher next step, along with following our scope and sequence. So, there really is good guidance there, and we're also going to bring back focusing on writing. I feel like it, that has been a weaken, weakness for us over the last three years, and I think it's starting to show. And the blueprint shows that it can be up to 41% of what, how the students, 41% of the overall I-Learn results. So, we're going to zoom in on that area as well. Changes and next steps.
So, when we talk about changes and next steps, again, we're talking about the new Irving, the students that are at Irving this year. And- And we wanted to give our teachers some more autonomy. So, one thing that we created in our schedule this year is what we're calling the Flex Block, which is a flexible block of time, a thirty-minute period in the school day that teachers have the opportunity to choose what they need to teach their students. STEM will be included in that time, of course, because there's an expectation during the week that they do that. But this also gives them the opportunity to decide, "Is there something I need to reteach? Is there something I want to enrich my students?" So, we're giving them that opportunity. We're calling that the Flex Block during the day. We're also putting a big focus on social-emotional instructional time. So, at Irving, like many of the other schools, we're implementing a community time or morning meeting at the beginning of the day. At our school, we call that the Panther Circle because we have Panther pride. Immediately following that, we're following the PEAK curriculum, which is a Pearson curriculum that we piloted at our school last year, which is a social-emotional lesson that's already prepared the curriculum that the teachers follow and deliver to the students based on the needs in their classroom. So, it could be they're noticing a trend of students not listening, or students not sharing with each other, and then they pick a related topic to teach the lesson. Each teacher in each classroom also has a calm-down or refocus center, and they teach the students the ways to use that if they identify that they need a timeout to help them self-regulate. Our school psychologist is leading a social skills group with the students that we've identified as our Tier Three behavioral needs, and she is helping teach social skills and conflict management to those students. And as far as discipline practices, we're really trying to take more of a social-emotional approach by doing more restorative justice, peer mediation groups, as well as trying to practice the collaborative proactive solutions as presented in the Lost at School book that we did as a book study as administrators last year. At the beginning of the school year, we spent a lot of time placing students specifically into classrooms. Our EL learners, we made sure that we placed them with teachers that were PSYOP-trained last year and showed strengths in that PSYOP instruction, as well as placing our students with IEPs in classrooms with teachers that really showed strength in differentiating their instruction. So, we had a lot of strategy behind our placement of students in classrooms before the school year even started. We were also able to add a third RTI paraprofessional this year who is focusing only on math for our third, fourth, and fifth-grade students, again with that focus on number sense as we use the data to identify. And then, finally, for changes this year, we were able to have a full-time parent facilitator, which has been crucial in bringing the two school communities together and building a new school.
So, for my next steps, it's just basically ensuring that everything we said we're going to do, that we do it, and number one, ensuring that we are providing, or ensuring that the SEL skills are being taught daily. Also, again, meeting with the Language Development Program staff to discuss student services progress towards the SMART goals and just making sure that their individual learning plans are being implemented, that teachers understand them. So, we're doing a lot with there, and then, just overall, ensuring that all programs are starting off strong, but not only all programs, but of course, all our teachers are starting off strong, and our teams are working good together. And so far, I wanted to add that we have already done twenty PDs for our staff. Some of them have been whole group, and we've done a lot of small-group PDs depending on needs. Some teachers have reached out also saying, "Hey, can I have a little brush-up on this or that?" But we've already documented twenty PDs, which I'm, we didn't have nearly that many last year at this time, so I'm very happy for that, and I want to keep it going. Another thing we've done already is we're surveying students, surveying staff, just to make sure that we are addressing all of our needs, and we're going to do it beginning, middle, and end of year. Another thing that's new this year is we have a building committee report, and that's where teachers can share out their concerns privately. And today, we actually, we're running a little late today because we actually just met with our leadership team, and we have decided to problem-solve together. So, we literally were like trying to problem-solve like this and that because I thought, "I can't do it by myself." You know, we all have to do this as a, as a team, and every problem we went through today, we had, we came up with some solutions. We're going to try this, try that. So, I'm very happy on how everything is going. It is a very large school. We have a lot of challenges, but if we keep that mindset that we're going to work the problems out together, I feel like we're going to have a successful school year. So, and if you guys have any questions for us later or now, whenever, just let me know. Thank you. And thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody.
Well, she's, she didn't expound on her dual-language program while they're setting up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Anna, while there's, Anna, do you want to give an update on the DLI while they're setting up?
Okay. Okay. The, this is our first year. Last year, we spent the year planning for rolling out our, the first dual-language immersion program in Lake County, Indiana. It has totally, truly been a team effort. I don't know what we would have done without everything that was put in place to make it successful. I've heard of other programs that were not successful, but they didn't have the support that I think we had here at Irving with Teri Myrick and Justin Superintendent. Even prior to Mr. Miller supporting us, Dr. Watkins was very supportive, and I know you guys were as well when we had presented it. But so far, it's going very well. We have parents that are very happy with the, with how things are going. So, we currently have three dual-language kindergarten classes and two first-grade kindergarten classes. Our first grader, twenty-nine students in one class, so it's, and twenty-six in the other, so the, the interest is there. And, I mean, we're doing some, we're learning, we're, we also just all took a course on how to implement a strong two-way dual-language program. And the reason I say two-way is that this program has fifty percent of the students are English-only students. The other fifty percent can be bilingual or Spanish-only students. And this way, the students learn how to support each other in Spanish or in English. So, but so far, everything has been going very nice, and the parents are very happy, and I truly see this as a good model to help us close the achievement gap. And even when looking at different programs under the umbrella of bilingual education, this is one of them, and it's considered to be the strongest one. So, you have, you know, sheltered English programs, you have ESL pull-out, push-in. This is the best model available. So, I'm very happy that we have this opportunity to, to roll this out for our community. And I think once the word gets out there, it's just going to grow in popularity. And all the research shows that the students who are, who have participated in dual-language programs, which is for elementary schools, it's a, you know, they're in the program five to six years. The average student outperforms mono-English, mono-language, mono-English students. So, it's definitely a win-win for our district, and I'm very excited about it.
If I could just tell a quick story about that, I won't say any names, but I ran into a grandmother of a student who's in the DLI program, and he's in the kindergarten class. And she is a native Spanish speaker, and she's been trying for five years to get him to speak Spanish, but she said after like three weeks of being in the class that he was already correcting her Spanish. So...
Yeah. It's, it's amazing, and even when Dr. McCormick came to visit, and you were with us as well, and it, it was shocking to see how, they had only been in the program eleven days, I think, at that time, and the kids were, I mean, you, you would have thought they were in the program since last, you know, since the year before, but it's very shocking to see how quickly they pick up language, and, and they're very proud to use it. Their self-esteem is just going up. And when they, when you see them in the classrooms, they're just lit, they're just so happy to, you know, they're trying to use the language with you, and it's just very, very impressive. I mean, very, I'm just very proud to have that at Irving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Miller, President White and members.
You're going to have to use your teacher voice.
Yes, I will. Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
That's okay. Don't be nervous.
Okay. So, my name is Mary Reichel. I'm the principal at Morton Elementary, and I have Alan Walzak, who is my assistant to the principal this year. We're going to share a little data with you, some of our demographic data. You'll notice that almost forty-nine percent of our children are Hispanic, twenty-nine percent are African-American, and then sixteen percent are white, so pretty diverse group. Sixty, almost sixty-seven percent of our students are free lunch, and thirteen percent of those students are reduced lunch as well.
Can you wait one second? We're trying to turn your microphone up. It's very hard to hear you.
Just a little more, please.
Yeah. Just a little louder.
Okay, can you...
I'll speak louder. I'll speak louder. Okay. So, fifteen percent of our students are special education students, and we also have fourteen-point-six percent of our students as EL students, English-language learners. Some of our assessment data, I've put our three-year trend for I-Step. You'll notice that we're pretty stable with I-Step with a couple of either decreases or increases from year to year. And just as my colleagues have said, that our I-Learn data, we did see a dip. However, I'd like to point out that we were above our district average in five of our categories. The one that we were not was our third-grade English Language Arts, and we were just two percentage points behind where the district average was for that. Looking at our NWEA data, we have, we are pretty close to that fifty percent mark for our students meeting or exceeding the norm. And when we talk about normative data, we talk about wanting fifty percent of our population to be right in the middle there. So, we are fairly close. But if you look at our projected growth, so when the students take the tests in the fall, they receive a projected growth for them to accomplish in the spring, we are almost at all of our grade levels at that fifty percent or higher, and you'll notice that in mathematics, we are pretty strong in our primary grades. So, looking at our SMART goals, by the spring of 2020, Morton Elementary will decrease office referrals by ten percent by implementing a variety of social-emotional supports. We would also like to increase our English Language Arts performance in grades three through five by five percent as measured by I-Learn. And we would also like to increase our mathematics performance in grades three through five as measured by I-Learn. Some of our steps that we're going to take to do that are, we're working with our teachers to identify both those critical standards in mathematics and language arts. We are doing collaborative data meetings. So, teachers meet a few times a month on their own with just their grade level to discuss any data that they had, either local assessments, grade-level assessments, or possibly those NWEA assessments when we have that available to us. We are also asking our teachers to participate in data analysis meetings several times a year. We've done that once in the years past, and I feel like this year, we need to step that up, so we're doing that three times this school year, where we'll get together as a staff and go through our NWEA data and really dig in deep into what the data's telling us. We're also asking teachers to participate in professional development. We do have the new math envisioned program, so we are providing professional development on them for the new math program because we don't want to see a dip there. We've been pretty strong in our math scores, so we want to make sure that our teachers are fully aware of what the program is asking them to do and making sure that our students are getting what they need. We're also asking them to provide, to be participant in social-emotional professional development, as we know that we've seen an increase in the number of students who need to help with regulating their emotions. So, we've also asked our students and our staff to participate in those morning meetings, and we've encouraged our staff to check in with those students and let the office know or let somebody know if we have a student who needs immediate attention during that time so that we can step in and hopefully decrease those office referrals. So, next steps for both Alan and I, we're going to work with our teams again to look through those curriculum maps and really dig deep in making sure that we are hitting all the critical standards that we need to hit. We're going to provide targeted feedback based on our walkthrough data, so increasing our walkthroughs and then providing targeted data depending on what needs we see in our building. And again, provide that professional development support in both in social-emotional learning, in the data analysis, in our envisioned math, and also with our power schools, since we are asking them to look at office referrals for that as well. So, that is our SEL plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry, is that the last one?
Yeah, that's the last one.
Okay. Well, tomorrow night, we're going to be having a hearing from our secondary leadership, correct, Ms. Goodes?
Correct.
All right.
And then, the other elementary are going to be when?
Do we have any more elementary?
The other elementary will be on the twenty-fourth.
We, do we have time on the twenty-fourth? We have three different things on the twenty-fourth.
Four.
We have...
Must we want to schedule a different date?
Yeah. Well, we have the 5:30 public work session, we have a 6 o'clock special board meeting, and then, an executive session.
Executive session after the...